I would like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. A motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda.
One second, sir, Chair. They're not recording it. I'm hindering the process, my fault. Thank you. And you want to change your call? I'll be, I'll be, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Second by Ms. Ralston, Neabiscot District. Discussion? Please vote.
Do you agree, Mr.?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to the motion to enter closed session, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711, the school board enter closed session for the following reasons: one, to discuss, consider, assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and resignation of specific employees and pointees or officers of our school board under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 and 8; two, to discuss with legal counsel and take action on the placement of disciplinary appeals to specific students under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A2 and A3; to discuss with staff and division counsel, personnel, and legal matters relating to employee T-20-28 under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1, 7, and 8; four, to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters and actual probable litigation under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A7 and 8; five, to receive legal advice from division counsel on legal issues related to referral, individual concerns, complaints to the office superintendent under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and 6; to discuss with staff to acquisition of real property for school purposes where discussion in open meetings would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy to school board; and discussion in the investment of public funds where bargaining involved or made public initially the financial interest of school board would be adversely affected under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A3 and 6.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston, Neabiscot District. Please vote.
I don't even, I don't even have.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Prince William County School Board now enter closed session, return to open session, approximately one hour. All right, we're just gonna go. The Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. We do not have any closed session action items, is that correct, Mary? Okay, moving on to the adoption of the closed session consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston. Seconds. Discussion? Any, please vote. She, she's yes.
Okay. Vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to closed session certification, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3712, the closed session of our school board meeting in January 22, 2020 be certified by adopting the following resolution, now therefore be resolved at the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge: one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies; and two, only such public matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting that were heard and discussed or considered by the board.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Ralston, Neabiscot District, seconds. Discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Wonderful. Next, we're moving on to our Positively Prince William County Schools, Positively PWCS. Tonight's Positively PWCS highlights, an award-winning group of students. Superintendent Dr. Walts will introduce our presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Latif and members of the board. I am excited to welcome Amanda McCullough, the Principal of Pennington Traditional School, who is here tonight to share information on the school's award-winning We the People program.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. My name is Amanda McCullough, and I am the proud principal of Philip Michael Pennington Traditional School. Tonight, I am here to showcase and share with you how incredibly hard our students work and compete in We the People. I have with me my Assistant Principal David Anderson and some of our fierce competitors from 6th through 8th grades. I also have Erin Merrill, our team's highly-driven coach and a mentor with the Virginia Civics Organization who sponsors the We the People competition. I know that I could tell you a lot about this competition and about these students. I've followed them to regionals, I'm excited to follow them to states this Saturday, but they say it best that they're the ones who are in there and doing all the work, so I'm going to hand it over to our students.
My name is Sean Villa-Corte, I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Maria Huck, and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Juris Field, and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Michael Creepy, and I'm in 6th grade.
Okay, Maria, go ahead.
We the People is a national competition through the Center for the Constitution. In Virginia, there are about a dozen middle schools who currently participate, and about 24 high schools. We are currently the only team in Prince William County for either middle or high school. This year was our first time hosting regionals where we took first place. We are now one of six middle schools invited to compete at state-level competition this Saturday at the University of Virginia.
In our competition, students participate in a simulated congressional hearing where they are called in as experts on a topic related to the Constitution. The teams must research their topic as well as the Constitution, current events in U.S. history. This year's topics range from ancient Rome and its impact on how American government was structured, to debate about the inevitability and impact of political parties on civic participation, to the freedoms of speech and due process.
Each school sponsors six teams or units, and each team has a different topic to research. The units are based on the free curriculum from the Center for the Constitution, and our first source to answer the questions are our textbooks. From there, we must research online to learn about the topic and find examples that support our topic and our group's opinions about them. Finally, we have to reference the Constitution, amendments, and other founding documents. We turn our research into a four-minute prepared speech, much like the prepared comments that witnesses give at congressional hearings.
The question part is harder. After your team gives their speech, the judges have six minutes to ask you anything they want to, about your assigned topic or anything you brought up in your speech. You don't know what the judges will ask you, so you have to be prepared for anything. You're not allowed to use notes to help you, and you have to work with your team to make sure everyone participates without being able to talk to each other. You also have to make sure that you give the judges both sides of an issue, so sometimes you have to disagree with what your teammates say, even if you don't believe it.
We the People teaches us a lot of advanced skills, including research, critical thinking, teamwork, and public speaking. In many ways, it is harder than the tests that we take in class, but it's also more rewarding because even if your team does not win a medal, you get the satisfaction of showing your knowledge on a topic outside of class and your ability to think on your feet. I think that I have learned more about what is really happening in our country, how it works, and how some things may need to be fixed so that citizens get more of a chance to say what they think. I also think that people should have more enforcement at protests to make sure that no one gets hurt, because lately too many people have been getting injured or killed.
I personally feel, since both my older brothers were on the We the People team, that I would carry on the legacy. Plus, Ms. Merrill and my mother made me, so. I kind of feel like the We the People lets me understand both sides of an issue, and it has helped me prove my point in a professional way. I think in the future, it will help me communicate my ideas with coworkers and other colleagues that I'll interact with.
My older sister really enjoyed doing We the People, and I wanted to try something new because I've never done a club like this before. Something I like about doing We the People is how many skills we picked up while writing our speech, presenting it, and answering the questions. I've learned a lot more history and how to find websites to help with my research.
I really love how we share, we can share our opinions, and you get to learn so much about the country, the past, and the present. It has also helped me to expand my vocabulary. I had no idea what civic participation was until I came to this club, and I'm even doing it right now.
And I am gonna sneak in real quick, and just for Dr. Walts' benefit, one of the greatest accomplishments so far this year is we beat our rivals of many, many years who happened to belong to a neighboring school division, so it was great to take first in regionals.
And going in with that, this was also our first time hosting regionals, which was thrilling because we have had to been dragging the kids to Loudon for years, and so I begged and begged, and Dr. Bishop was nice enough to let us use Patriot High. All right, so I am Erin Merrill, and I'm the coach of the We the People team. I've been working with Virginia Civics since 2007 when they began their pilot at the middle school level, although high schools have been competing on this for 25 years. So, I am now working with Jeff Girvin and the History and Social Studies Department to try and get more participation in the county. We've presented workshops to teachers on Content Day, and we are hoping that by publicizing what our students are doing more, that we can especially get some high school teams to start, because I know my Pennington students present and past would love to compete at the high school level. So, I will conclude by saying that over the past six years, our Pennington team has frequently placed at the top three at regionals or states, although we are thrilled to have taken home our first gold medal this year, as Ms. McCullough said. As the student said, we're off to states this Saturday at the University of Virginia. We will, of course, tweet about it and let you know how we do. So, thank you for this opportunity to have presented our program to you, and we hope that when we send out an invitation next fall, that some of you will come and guest judge for us.
You know, I just watched your presence and how you guys organize yourselves. Please put me on your list, I'd love to come and judge. Thank you very much, and thank you for a wonderful presentation.
I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. Hold on one sec, sorry. This, there'll be a moment of silence at the request of Diane Ralston of the Neabiscot District. If one of the students would like to stand up to the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, everyone can please rise, and the flag is over here in the corner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with one rule, and justice for all.
So, little bit out of order, we had a meeting that canceled because of snow, and I had asked Dr. Walts to make some comments regarding some updates that we were gonna do at the last meeting, so I'm gonna ask him to make these comments now before we move to the part of our meeting, which is the annual organization meeting. Dr. Walts?
Thank you, Chairman Latif and members of the board. We recognize that citizens have come to recent school board meetings to express concerns about Woodbridge Senior High School. Please note that these concerns have been noted. While I cannot comment on personnel matters due to privacy laws, I can assure you that we take this matter very seriously. We believe that everyone involved should receive fair treatment and due process, and receive the opportunity to provide their perspective. In order to ensure this, the School Division, through the school board's action, has retained an outside law firm to investigate these concerns and report back to me and to the school board. The findings of the firm will not be open to the public again because of privacy laws having to do with personnel. The principal will take appropriate actions from the findings. Any updates that we can provide to the public when completed will be communicated as soon as possible. The climate and culture of our schools is critical. We want and we expect professionalism from all of our staff, compliance with the policies and the regulations of the School Division. Ultimately, the leader of Woodbridge High School is the principal, and we continue to support her efforts. Ms. Heather Apni is the principal, and I believe that she is doing an outstanding job. I know that Woodbridge High School is an outstanding school, and again, this year they've earned the prestigious School of Excellence Award. I'm certain the future will bring great opportunity for the students, staff, and community to demonstrate that greatness together. Thank you.
Next, we're gonna go to the annual organization meeting, 1401, and we have a series of, you know, annual things we do, and I, there is, these items are all on for action. Can I have a motion on 1401?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the annual organization meeting agenda as recommended. Nomination for the vice chair, clerk appointment, deputy clerk appointment, corporate surety bond for the clerk, and deputy clerk. Time, dates, and locations for school board meetings for 2020. Superintendents designated to attend school board meetings, and membership in professional organizations, and appointment of representatives.
Do I have a second?
Chairman.
I'll give it to Ralston wins. Second on Ms. Ralston, Neabiscot. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Next is 14.02, I do have a motion. Mr. Wilk.
Mr. Chairman, as the outgoing vice chair of the Prince William County School Board, I place the nomination of Ms. Lori Williams of the Woodbridge District for Vice Chair for the upcoming board year.
I will, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I will second that motion.
Okay.
I will second the motion to nominate Ms. Lori Williams of the Woodbridge District to be Vice Chair of the Prince William County School Board. Any discussion? Ms. Williams.
I accept the nomination, thank you.
Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Congratulations, Madam Vice Chair Williams. Next, we'll move to the appointment of the clerk, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board appoint Deborah H. Urban as the clerk of the Prince William County School Board for 2020. The salary for the clerk shall be as currently budgeted.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk, Potomac District.
I second.
Excellent. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
1404, a motion is in order for the appointment of the deputy clerk. Ms. Williams.
Ms. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board appoint Ms. B. Simpson as deputy clerk of the Prince William County School Board for 2020. The salary for the deputy clerk shall be as currently budgeted.
A second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
I'm gonna go to Jen Wall, second.
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Yeah, great, Ms. Jen Wall wins that one. And we will have any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Next, we'll move on to 1405, corporate surety bond for the clerk and the deputy clerk. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board require a corporate surety bond in the amount of $10,000 for the clerk and deputy clerk to the school board, conditioned upon the faithful performance and discharge of their duties, with the premium for such bonds to be paid by this, for, by the school board.
Second?
I second.
Ms. Jessie of the Okaquan District.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Please vote.
I second. The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
This is the general one, got it. 1406, times, dates, locations, school board meetings, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms., Madam Vice Chair.
Oh, nice, thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board establish the location of its regular school board meetings at 14715 Bristow Road, Manassas, Virginia, on the first and third Wednesdays of the months of January through June and September through December. Closed session meeting shall convene at 6:00 p.m., and public meetings shall convene at 7:00 p.m. A few adjustments will be made to accommodate spring break, graduation, and the Virginia School Board's annual convention, and winter break.
Do I have a second?
I, Mr. Chairman?
Ah, Ms. Zargarpur of the Coles District, seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion, please vote. Thank you, Mr. Fletcher.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Superintendent's designated to attend school board meetings, 1407, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I move that Keith Emon Deputy Superintendent be appointed to, as a designated of the division superintendent to attend meetings of the school board in the absence and our inability of superintendent to attend.
I will second that. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Outstanding. Are we gonna, are we reading 1408? Do we have to read it, Ms.?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Membership in professional organizations and appointment of representatives. Do I have a motion is in order? Ms. Williams? You can question after you make the motion. Read it all.
I move that, oh, thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments for the organizations and committees as follows. Continued membership in, one, continued membership in the School Board Association for 2020. Two, elect Ms. Williams to serve as a delegate to the Virginia School Board Association Annual Convention in Williamsburg, Virginia, on November 18 through 2020. Three, elect Ms. Ralston to serve as the alternate to the Virginia School Board Association Annual Convention in Williamsburg, Virginia, on November 18 through 2020. Four, appoint Ms. Jackson to serve as a representative to the Northern Virginia Special Education Regional Board for 2020. Five, appoint Mr. Wilk to serve as the alternate to the Northern Virginia Special Education Regional Board for 2020. Six, appoint Ms. Ralston to serve as a representative to the National Alliance of Black School Educators for 2020. Seven, appoint Ms. Jessie to serve as the alternate to the National Alliance of Black School Educators for 2020. Eight, appoint Dr. Latif to serve as a representative to the Prince William County School, Prince William County and Schools Joint Audit Committee for 2020. Nine, appoint Ms. Jackson to serve as the alternate to the Prince William County and the Schools Joint, and Schools Joint Audit Committee for 2020. Ten, appoint Ms. Zargarpur to serve as a representative to the Washington Area Boards of Education for 2020. Eleven, appoint Dr. Latif to serve as the alternate to the Washington Area Boards of Education for 2020. Twelve, appoint Ms. Jessie to serve as a representative to Head Start Advisory Board for 2020. Thirteen, appoint Dr. Latif and Ms. Wall, Mrs. Walls, to serve as a representative for the Health, Schools Healthy, Health Advisory Board for 2020, excuse me. Fourteen, appoint Ms. Walls and Mr. Wilk to serve on the Safe Schools Advisory Council for 2020. Fifteen, appoint Dr. Latif and Ms. Walls to serve as representatives to the Prince William County Schools Internal Audit Committee for 2020. Sixteen, appoint Ms. Jackson to serve as the alternate to the Prince William County Schools Internal Audit Committee for 2020.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston, Neabiscot District, seconds. Any discussion? Ms. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, on this list, there is no appointment for the Joint CIP Committee from this board.
I think that's a separate agenda item.
That's because it's not, it's not an annual committee that you appoint.
Yeah, we elect those.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Jessie.
For six years, I have been a representative on the National Alliance of Black Educators, and for five or six years, I've told the school system that there is no local organization. And I did attend the National Alliance of Black Educators a year, and it created some controversy. So, I really want to know if the chairman realizes that this National Alliance of Black Educators will require Ms. Ralston and for the two of us to travel to the national convention.
I'm happy to send you to the national convention.
Thank you very much. I think it's in Paris.
I mean, that falls within the, oh, even better. That makes a lot of sense, too, I guess. Okay, please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Thank you. Our annual meeting organizational items are now over. We're gonna move to 1501, which is the approval of the public meeting agenda. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Second? Ms. Wall. Seconds.
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Yeah, thank you, sorry. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Next, we'll move to 1601, which is the adoption of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second? Ms. Wall? Ms. Wall seconds.
Yes, I second.
Excellent. Discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Hold on one sec. Next, we will move to the student representative matters. You're moving to the podium?
Yeah.
Outstanding, fantastic, excellent, great. Good luck.
Thank you, board, for having me here tonight. My name is Ben Kim, I'm student representative, and it's nice to meet you guys. All right, so, high schoolers are losing their education, and it's not because of a lack of interest, it's because they're tired. I know we're all kind of woke up tired this morning. Sleeping in class, drowsy driving, which is equivalent to intoxicated driving, and poor mental health are just a few symptoms of the problem of early start times. So, the solution is to start high schools later. California, home of some of the largest school systems in the nation, mandated that all high schools must start past, or at 8:00 a.m. or later. Local counties such as Fairfax and Loudon have taken action. Science and simple logic show that start times, when they're later, are better for teachers and students. Teachers have more time to plan, and they have more engaged students to teach more. Students experience increased academic performance, attentiveness, which is critical in class and behind the wheel, and a better well-being, and are physically healthier. Our bodies want to go to bed at 11:00 p.m., but we don't, like everyone, don't want to wake up at 6:00. We understand that logistically this is more expensive and may conflict with work schedules, but it's time to put a foot down and give each student the best education possible, and that starts with later start times. And on the topic of mental health, sleep deprivation is a contributor to many students' poor mental health. Stress of academics, athletics, and extracurriculars also contribute to this. So, sometimes, students struggling with their mental health or emotional health simply need a day off. My proposal is Mental Health Days. Mental Health Days are when students can have an excused absence so as long as they speak with their counselor and meet with them the following school day. Montgomery County in Virginia has implemented this, and it's an extremely feasible task here in Prince William County. I've spoken to Ms. Slater counselors at my school and students, and they all have expressed that Mental Health Days would bring about a very positive impact here. However, there is concern about the potential abuse of Mental Health Days. To combat this, there can be a cap on the number of Mental Health Days students can take, and the punishment for misusing one can be treated as skipping school would normally be treated. These are just two things that I am working on. In addition to mental health, I'm also working towards increasing parent involvement and educating students about post-high school oppo- educating students about post-high school opportunities, like college readiness assemblies, SAT tutoring, presentations, all of the above. And my fellow student representatives, Tahera Hamidi and Eliana Black, they are also pursuing specific issues. Tahera is working on student decriminalization, so things like ISS and student-to-prison pipeline, as well as food management. She's trying to give all students affordable food and limit the amount that goes into the landfill, which creates greenhouse gases. Eliana is working on creating opportunities for special education students and lower-income students. So, in addition to our own pursuits, we, as student reps, collectively plan the Student Senate Meetings. So far, the Senate has had one meeting, and we will have our second one this Friday. I have a typed summary of our first meeting for each of you all. And so, at the meetings, we discuss problems at each of the high schools, and more importantly, solutions. We are looking forward to seeing how the senators have been collecting student input at their schools. Truly, you all and Mr. Gervon's vision of an efficient Senate is coming into fruition. I will be posting summaries on my Twitter, @BenPwCS, and, and we hope to work with you guys a lot, and just be the most efficient system possible of collecting student input. Finally, I just wanna congratulate all you board members who got sworn in and are here tonight, and it's really exciting to be working with you guys. Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Kim, quick question. At the beginning, you said California. Have they mandated it, correct, by law?
Yes, yes.
So, the state of California has now mandated late, later start times for high school students, correct?
Yes, public.
Do you know any of the school districts around here who are doing late?
Fairfax, Loudoun.
I know, I'm asking him.
I'm excited.
That's great, thank you. Who, who are they again? Say it out loud.
Fairfax and Loudoun County.
Are doing late start times?
Yes.
Okay.
Later than 7:30.
Well, Ms. Ralston's asking what time?
Fairfax High Schools start around 8:15. It kinda varies, 8:15 to 8:30. I think some Loudoun, maybe even 9:00, so.
Excellent. Excellent, Mr. Kim, that was an outstanding presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, I gotta say.
That's okay. Next, we're gonna go to citizens' comment time. We have 20 citizens who are here this evening to speak, and we will do them all in a row. They each have three minutes. If you follow the lights on the screen, it'll tell you, you know, how much time you have left, and the yellow light will signify. You should sum up your position. The red indicates your time is up, and you should stop. Please use proper decorum manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. Please give your name and address for the record when you approach the podium. Our first speaker, and I'll call up the first 10, they can grab seats up front, John Sneed, Garrett Riley, Dennis Riley, Paul Bassler, Nicholas Agnos, Everett Catlett, Swanell Wiggins, Kate Olson Flynn, Jennifer Gilli, Riley Ocasey, and Riley Ocasey. Okay, we'll start with John Sneed. Garrett Riley. Dennis Riley. Paul Bassler. Nicholas Agnos. Everett Catlett. Swanell Wiggins.
Good evening. My name is Swanell Wiggins, and my address is on file. School Board members and Dr. Walts, thank you for your comments regarding Woodbridge Senior High School. Dr. Martin Luther King once wrote, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." The injustices that have been perpetuated on the students at Woodbridge Senior High School are injustices that, that impact the entire Prince William County community. Many of the Woodbridge High School parents have come to you expressing the disgust of racial undertoned language directed at our children, as well as numerous FERPA violations. Dr. Walts, as of today, you have done nothing. Why not? When these same parents express their outrage, when the head coach, the football coach, was forced to resign due to hostile working environment created by the, the Director of Student Activities and Administration, Dr. Walts, you did nothing. Why not? For the past two months, complaints were issued against the Director of Student Activities at Woodbridge High School. Instead of launching a proper investigation at that time, you instead asked a retired school employee to contact me to seemingly appease me. Now that unofficial complaints have been submitted per the Prince William County policy and the state code, once again, you have handed off the investigation to someone else per the email that I received, Mr. Mulgrew. The same Mr., the same Michael Mulgrew who reportedly hired Jason Eldridge to clean house, to fire the entire football coaching staff. But when parents and students in the western end of the county, who live in the same district as you do, Dr. Walts, complained about the firing of the baseball coach, they got exactly what they asked for. Their coach was reinstated. They did not have to beg or plead before the board for two months, as we have, nor were their, were their students called disrespectful. You have responded directly to their emails and Twitter messages. I ask you, Dr. Walts, why have you not afforded us the same level of respect? Why have we been ignored? The answer is clear. It appears that systemic racism is alive in Prince William County schools. School Board members, it is time to get involved. If the superintendent and his staff dismiss our complaint according to the state code, you can initiate a hearing. Instead of talking about what is right and just, it is time to do what is right and just. We want justice, and we want it now. Thank you.
Kate Olson Flynn. Jennifer Gilli.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Gilli, and my address is on file. First, I'd like to wish you all a Happy New Year and hope you had a great holiday. Second, I'd like to welcome the new school board members and let you know about a group of parents called Parents Who Care, who continue to fight for equity in our schools in Prince William County. We started a couple years ago to make you all aware of things happening at the schools in our neck of the woods, since you all cannot be everywhere. I hope you've been a positive, I hope we have been a positive influence, and know that I, for one, will continue to speak up for those that can't and don't for our children in this county. Second, I'd like to encourage you to reconsider the 14th high school location off of Holy Road, for so many reasons that there's not a good location to put a new school, not the least of which is the traffic problems that it will cause, especially considering special events, football games, a lot of different things, so. I know Dr. Walts just spoke about Woodbridge High School, I appreciate that, but I'd also like to share a few thoughts that I have in the new year to show my continued support for the families at Woodbridge High School. As you know, this has been a trying year for our families at Woodbridge, myself included. My son's senior year as a football player did not start off as one would think the last year of high school should, and still the problems continue to follow these young men, even after football season is over. There are parents here that were coming to talk about the rehiring of the coach at Colgan High School. From what I understand, and I could have misinformation, he did things that were not allowed by coaches, and yet, he has been reinstated with a slap on the, on the wrist. Our head football coach at Woodbridge resigned his position on his own doing, but due to issues that he was forced out. This person, who parents were told would not change things, but yet, before school even started, multiple changes were instituted and changed in a program that was not broken, a program that was supported by the principal, administration, parents, and the school, and the changes have continued to happen within the program, including losing all of the football coaches. Parents have been coming to these meetings about this issue since November, if not before, and still nothing has been done to rectify the situation. Parents are still upset with the administration. Administration says their hands are tied, and student athletes are missing out on opportunities that Coach Wertham was able to give. Seems a bit unfair that one coach is bullied out of a job by a newcomer, saying, "I was told to clean house, and that's what I'm gonna do from the very beginning," and another coach is told, "We don't wanna see this happen again," and gets his job reinstated. This is not equity in the schools. This is the exact issue that Prince William County school system has inside the schools in the county. You need to take your position that we put you in very seriously, and know that we are entrusting you to do the right things to our schools. There are a lot of parents watching you, and many more who will continue to attend these meetings to speak up for our children. Thank you.
Riley Ocasey.
Good evening. Dr. Latif, board members, Dr. Walts, my name is Riley Ocasey. My address is on file. As president of the Prince William Education Association, I'd like, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome the new board, new board members, and to all board members, thank you for your service and commitment to the students and employees of Prince William County schools. We look forward to working with you. As a regular at the school board meetings, I would like to offer a few words of advice that I hope will help as you navigate this role as a school board member. Regulars should have special comfortable chairs. I'm kidding, but not really. Never forget why you are here. You are here for the students. But please don't forget the employees. Build on your strengths as an individual and as a group. Listen, observe, look beyond words. Personal agendas don't matter. Our kids matter. I would like to personally invite you to attend the Fund Our Future Rally in Richmond on Monday, January 27th, beginning at noon. Educators across the Commonwealth will gather to, to demand that public education is properly funded. I would like to thank Dr. Walts and the Human Resources Department for allowing all employees in Prince William County schools to attend, pending approval from their administrator or supervisor. I still have hope, Dr. Walts, that you will attend and tweet about this historical moment in public education. I would like to share a few devastating statistics. There are over 1,000 unfilled teaching positions in Virginia. A VCU poll recently indicated that 70% of Virginians felt that public schools are not adequately funded to meet their needs. Virginia teacher salaries are ranked 49th in the nation, and are still $8,500 under the national average. Virginia localities invested $4.2 billion above the required local effort for SOQ programs last school year. We have an opportunity to fix this, and we need you with us. We need all of you with us. We need you standing beside us, fighting for our students, and demanding that our profession be respected. Will you stand with us? Thank you.
Emmett Fletcher. Ms.
I thought you had forgotten. Mr. Chairman, school board members, Dr. Walts, good evening. My name is Emmett Fletcher. My address is on file. Behold how good and pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. Songs 133, verse 1. Again, we're addressing the issue of Woodbridge High School. We have new members on the board, and we aren't going anywhere, and you guys just arrived. Woodbridge students and parents have addressed the, the board for the last two months concerning the treatment of students, the athletes, and coaching personnel at the school. Students and parents are upset. They have reached out to the community and various organizations for help. This is something that this board and Dr. Walts, which I have confidence in, will get resolved, but we need to do it now. How would this situation at Woodbridge High School be hounded if it was at Patriot High School or Colgan High School? Let's get real, we all on social media, we know what's going on. You guys have the ability to take care of this and make a decision, and not pass it on to someone else. School Board members, you were elected to represent the citizens of Prince William County, and it's your duty to hold the school administration accountable, and the students should not feel mistreated by anyone. Everyone at Woodbridge High School is a professional, and we expect them to do their job with the utmost dignity. Check the record, check the school board record and administration regarding Patriot High School when they were going through similar situations, and also, just recently, at Colgan. What makes Woodbridge different than these, these schools? You know the answer. We all know the answer, and we're not going anywhere. We will be back every meeting with more people and more people, and we ask that you guys do your job. What we want is a 2020 clear vision and investigation of what's going on. We want to make Woodbridge High School whole again, like it was. All of this started back in August, and we're still going on in the new year, and we still don't have a resolution. We will be back, and we will continue to come until we get the results that we want. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your cooperation in, in advance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richard Jesse.
Good evening, Chairman Latif and Dr. Walts. My name is Richard Jesse. My address is on file. A couple administrative things, if you will. I'd like the board to consider that when there is a code red, that you just make a vote, that if it's code red, you do not have a school board meeting. You know, my wife gets this call, you know, "Do you guys wanna meet or not?" But if you met, you're gonna bring people, the janitors, the people back here in the room, you got citizens that will have to come out. It's not necessary. Just make a announcement or make a motion to somebody that when it's code red, the school board will not meet. Along the other lines, you just put out a schedule. There's been, in the past year, when it snowed, some important meetings were postponed, and then their deadlines started running. Consider also making a, a practice that you have scheduled snow days in case there is a, a code red, so that you have these important meetings. So, those are two. And one other thing, boundaries. I would like to recommend that you consider revamping the boundary policy, and I would like to be a part of that, because I think the boundary policy needs to be revamped and so forth. So, those are two things. With respect to Woodbridge High School, we have been here for years, and it's more than time that investigation should be done. But I find it somewhat appalling that the people who have complained did not know that you were gonna do this, had to wait until we came to this meeting to find out that you were gonna have an investigation. They should have been told before now. It's been several months, and as far as I know, not one of the people who have complained has had anyone that represented an investigation. They have people like the Principal Abney and the other person come to talk to them, but they were not doing an investigation. And it's, it's sad that it takes that long to do that. I'm happy to see that Mr. Mulgrew here this, today, because in the past, he has been absent. He has been here for closed sessions, but then, when the public meeting came, he was not here. And he needs to hear from the parents that have complaints. Thank you.
Aurora Hurtado.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board members, and Dr. Walts. I'm here on behalf of Parents Who Care, including Dr. Kate Olson Flynn, who could not attend this meeting. First and most, we want to say welcome to the new school board members. There is such promise in this new board to do great things for the students and teachers of this county. Thank you for your service. Because this is the first meeting of the new board, we would also like to suggest that the new board considers creating a mission statement that provides the guiding principles that govern your work with the budget and school policies, like other school boards have done. No statement exists for the board. The most important job that a The most important job that a school board undertakes is to govern how and to whom the county's money is allocated. If you truly value these ideas of equity and access for all students in all communities in the county, then those values should be made public and should steer your work with the budget and all decisions you make. So far, the only mission and vision statements that guide the county schools are from administration. Basically, the mission goes about providing a work-class education and explains what it is, and then the vision starts with, you know, "In Prince William County Public Schools, all students will learn to their fullest potential." Due to timing, I will not read them all, but the lack, the absence of the words equity and access to all students is apparent on both statements. So the same is true for Dr. Waltz and the administrative team. You know, these are basically from administration, but we would like to see a mission and a vision for the board as well. If equity is something that we as a county are working on, the mission and vision statements should reflect those words so that all stakeholders are creating schools, programs, curriculum, and instruction in a way that gives every student access to equitable learning opportunities and excellence in education. On a personal note, I also want to add how encouraged we are at the preliminary plans for fenestration in our older high schools. Thanks for teaching me a new word, by the way. Please know that you have my full support to advocate for funding for these projects so we can equip our schools with the best possible options for natural light instead of having to settle for a solution that... It's a good first step, but hopefully we can do more than a good first step. And since I have 20 seconds, I would also like to encourage you to publicly recognize the settled debt organization for their work paying school loan debt. I know they are not in it for the accolades, but she certainly deserves it, and recognizing that publicly will bring more awareness about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Latif, school board members, and Dr. Waltz. Dr. Waltz, let me start off by saying despite the statement read, you still have a credibility problem as far as that investigation goes. Let me tell you, last night, our local NAACP branch had our first general membership meeting for the year 2020. We spent some time reviewing our successes from 2019 and discussing our vision for 2020. Part of the 2019 review dealt with our unfinished business, and right at the top of that list was this lingering injustice visited upon the Woodbridge High School 2019 football team and their parents. Our members were astonished when I reported that there had been no resolution. They demanded that I explain to them why their school board and the school system leadership felt that it was okay for a school official to recklessly disparage their children with insensitive racist language. They wanted me to explain why it was okay for a school official to unlawfully discuss the students' grades and performance on a standardized test in an open forum. They wondered why it was taking so long to resolve this situation so that this community could move forward with healing. They asked me if the school board and the school system leadership expected that the students, the parents, and by extension, this entire community would suffer this insult and injustice in silence. I don't know if that's your expectation, but I can tell you this: We will not be silent. I like to quote Dr. Martin Luther King also, and I think it's appropriate in light of the recent celebration of his birthday and the coming celebration of Black History Month that I quote him: "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. This injustice, this lingering toleration of an egregious wrong is inexplicable. At least one of the parents was told that she must consider the context of Mr. Eldridge's hurtful and racist language. I submit to all of you that you must consider the impact of this hurtful and racist language." You know, Dr. King also said, "The time is always right to do what is right. While this situation has festered far too long, it is time to rectify and resolve this situation. The Prince William NAACP has taken up this cause, and I am the voice. We intend to persistently and continuously advocate with a loud voice for justice for these students and their parents. We intend to use every resource available to us until you do the right thing." Finally, Dr. King said, "Cowardice asks the question, is it safe? Expedience asks the question, is it politic? Vanity asks the question, is it popular? But the conscious asks the question, is it right? And there comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe nor politic nor popular, but one must take it because it is right. I ask you all tonight to do the right thing."
Chrissy Falls.
Good evening, Dr. Waltz, Dr. Latif, board. My name is Chrissy Falls, and my address is on file. I'm the founder of a local nonprofit, Y Incorporated, servicing the greater Prince William area. We help educate residents on the dangerous issues that our children deal with daily. In the past few years, I have compiled a panel of professionals from the front line and survivor testimonies to help bring an understanding by seeing through their eyes. We also bring local resources to help the community be informed on where to turn if help is needed. I also sit on the Prevention Alliance of Greater Prince William Coalition and the Trauma Informed Community Network, both brought to you by Community Services. I ask that someone on this board be represented at those meetings. Those are important. Our topics include addiction with local drug trends, internet safety and exploitation, human trafficking, youth mental health first aid, adult mental health first aid, ACE interface, resiliency, mental health and suicide prevention. Y Incorporated was started when I was trying to educate myself and my children on the dangers that existed. Sure, I could have told them about my experiences growing up, what I did and didn't do, which of course I still do, but these days are much different than what most of us grew up with. Today, we face the power of the internet, which is foremost the biggest influence in their lives. After following a few educational information nights put on by our police department, I reached out to learn more about their programs and neighboring programs through the FBI, DEA, Homeland Securities, ICAC Division, which is the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, and many more that were on the front lines of these topics I was looking to educate on. I discovered that all of these organizations had a desire to educate the public but needed to be invited in order to do so. I ask that you all use your influence to talk to your schools about these dangers and host these discussions in schools and for the parents. Most parents are clueless about these topics, especially human trafficking, something Dr. Waltz promised to educate parents on and has not. It's even on your video on the website. I have been a parent in the school system for 10 years now, and the only ones that are educating in this horrific topic that does affect our students here in Prince William County are my organization, Just Ask Trafficking, Prevention, and AXS. And coming soon, Homeland Securities has a human trafficking division. Please reach out. It's real simple. What I do is not rocket science. I am not reinventing the wheel. I'm using those on the front line. All we need to do is have your invitation, co-host, and actually, the 31st, Jen Wall is helping us co-host an Internet Safety Night at Stonewall Middle School. Thank you.
Barry Wells.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Barry Wells. My address is 15136 Diamondback Road, Woodbridge, Virginia. I am an independent consultant by day and a football coach by night, two full-time jobs. I've been coaching for over 30 years. I think it's clear that the parents have taken a stand. They're going to expose these situations for what they are, and they're going to stand firm. On August 15th, Director of Student Activities Jason Eldridge met with several members of the Woodbridge High School varsity football staff to discuss issues, concerns, factors that led to a notice of resignation from the head football coaching staff in the summer practice sessions. It is important to note that Mr. Eldridge had only recently assumed the DSA responsibilities. This is his first time at this position level. It is standard practice, and I dare say, business 101, for an individual assuming a new management role to take a 30, 60, or 90-day period to familiarize him or herself with the operation, the environment, and the people who will be under their direction. This due diligence is paramount to successfully taking on any position of leadership. Mr. Eldridge's lack of true management experience was immediately evident as he used hearsay to drive his attitudes, actions, and approach with the football staff. His bull in a china closet mindset caused unnecessary confusion and chaos that was not present prior to his arrival at Woodbridge. His unprofessional tone and tenor in correspondence with the head football coach was shortsighted and ill-informed at best. He clearly has no experience in change management, and as a result, his rash and poorly designed process changes caused more harm than good. I explained to him that anytime you wish to modify a change in existing processes or procedures, that there's an allowance window for what we call adoption of the process, a time period required for the change to take effect. For him to expect that his requested changes would be implemented overnight was unrealistic and again highlights his inexperience in this type of management scenario. During the course of the discussion, Mr. Eldridge stated explicitly that he was hired to clean house, get rid of the coaching staff, claiming that the community-wide and within Prince William County school system, there was a negative perception, reputation regarding the Woodbridge football program. Again, I find this quite interesting, that nothing of this sort was ever presented to the coaching staff prior to Mr. Eldridge's arrival. Heather Abney also demonstrated her lack of management expertise as she was unable to effectively manage Mr. Eldridge's transition into his new role. Understanding that he's a first-time DSA should have warranted proper oversight and guidance on her part, which she failed miserably to provide. Consider also that prior to Mr. Eldridge's arrival, she was actively engaged and involved with the football staff and program by way of social media, rebel-run sports interviews, and was also highly visible before, during, and after football games. This speaks volumes with regard to the good standing the football program enjoyed for four years without incident. During the August 15th meeting, Heather Abney promised to be more supportive...
Mr. Wells, that's the end of your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Natasha Gillespie.
Hi, my name is Natasha Gillespie. My address is on file. I am here once again. I've been coming since October about the same issue at Woodbridge High School. My son also spoke here before to tell you about his experience, what's been going on at Woodbridge High School. Now, we speak about there has not been a resolution. The resolution is they hire a new coach without addressing our issues, and there has not been anything in place for these children to transition into a new environment with a new coach, a new his staff and everything, and these kids feel uncomfortable. There has not been any type of support for the children at Woodbridge. Of course, people may say, "Football, what is football?" But these are things that keep these children out of trouble. Football keep these children with the expectation of maybe wanting to go to college, to assist them financially, we're going to college, well, otherwise they may not. My son is a four-star athlete who has offers from different colleges, but yet, this would be his senior year, and nothing has been in place to support him. Now, he feels very uncomfortable because Monday, they have weight training at 5:00 AM. He feels uncomfortable. There's no support, no counselor, no anything, and everybody who has been coming here telling you that their children is stressed because of this. You don't know the relationship that they have with Coach Worthy and his staff. Coach, Mr. Wells is one of the coaches that was on the staff, and they speak about negative perception. I filed a complaint about FERPA, and I did get an email from Mr. Mulgrew at 10 o'clock last night saying there's an investigation, but nobody picked up the phone to call me to even ask me what happened. You know, I wrote it in the complaint, but I'm key, everything I get is through email. Why can't I speak to anyone? We've been going through this since August, August, and it's like we gotta beg for assistance, and we shouldn't have to do that because we didn't beg when we stood in line and we voted for you. You know? We didn't do that. So all we asking is to look out for our children, look out for the emotion. Some of these kids' grades are failing because they so stressed because of the transition, and they don't know what to do about it. You know, Ms. Abney, I get a phone call from her stating that, "How can we move forward? How can we move forward when you didn't address the problem in the first place?" We can't move forward, but I gotta send my son out there because it's going to be his senior year. He have to play ball. He has coaches coming to see him from West Virginia, from Ohio State, and everything, you know? But he has the weight on his back like someone who he was comfortable with, now he gotta go with someone that they bought from Texas, that they know nothing about. They didn't even have a meet and greet beforehand. They had one today, but yeah, he gotta come in on Monday and go to weight training. Thank you.
Shapook.
Shapook, sorry.
I would ask Mr. Mulgrew to please put his phone down and not text since he hasn't been here in October or November or December, but thank you for coming today. New school board members, I am one of 547 voters who signed the petition. We submitted this petition on December 8th, and we ask just for an investigation. That's all. The same investigation that the assistant head coach of Woodbridge High School endured when he wasn't even allowed to come on grounds. Now, all of you are the prettiest beige, some of you are kind of pink. I'm Mocha Brown. That coach was Mocha Brown, and there should have been an investigation. That was fine, but when someone who was kind of beige to light in pigment, where we could prove that he ostracized in a public platform and violated FERPA violations and othered transfer students and said, "Go back to where you came from, and I'll sign that paperwork today." He provided the proof, and we asked for an investigation. It seems like due process is dependent on pigment, and that shouldn't be. So let me understand something. What we're saying is systematic racism. This is what systematic racism looks like. When someone of a lighter complexion has a complaint, parents have to beg for two to three months, and they have the backing of the assistant superintendent and feel comfortable to violate our children's privacy and other them, and they are relying on the fact that their boss will care more about the personal relationship and that you will care more about being liked than we love our kids, and I want you to prove them wrong. As for this boss that allowed it, Dr. Waltz, I gave you the benefit of the doubt. When I came for the first time, my daughter's 23. I look young, but I got old lady tendencies, and I have never been to a school board meeting, and this is my first time for my son. I said, "Evil prevails." That's what Edmund Burke said, and I concur, "When good men do nothing." You're a good man, and I asked you to do something, and you did nothing. So I would like to see the assistant superintendent, Michael Mulgrew, who failed to even show up to hear our complaints. I would like you to do your job and hold him accountable. I would have liked him to have done his job and let Heather Abney be the principal so that she didn't turn a blind eye. But now, I'm asking the new school board members in my 29 seconds that when Superintendent, Dr. Superintendent Waltz, the good man, who ignored our questions and our requests, when he asked you to extend his $330,752 contract that also has 100K in benefits, that you ignore him the way that my December 8th, 547-page petition, excuse me, 547-voter petition was ignored because we can't afford him financially and we can't afford him morally.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Waltz. My name is Chelsea Frasko, and I'm the athletic trainer at Brentsville District High School. Up until this past year, the athletic trainers in Prince William County have been asked to serve a dual role. We've been asked to teach physical education classes, sports medicine classes, as well as provide athletic training duties to our schools. Working at the smallest school in the county, we have almost 500 athletes, so it just gives you an idea of the scale of the healthcare that we provide. And what this has resulted in is that we work a unique role. We work during the school day to prepare treatments, research injuries... We work during the school day to prepare treatments, research injuries, document to reduce liability for the county, communicating with coaches, parents, doctors, teachers, to make sure that our kids are getting the best healthcare possible. We work in the evenings covering games. That's why I'm here by myself, because the rest of us have home games this evening. So what I'm here asking for is your support in the upcoming budget discussions. Last year, you all and Dr. Waltz funded athletic training positions on a 1.0 FTE position. And far be it from me to claim to understand the intricacies of the school budget, but it's not a line item. And so what I think this is resulting in is principals and some schools still being asked to serve as a teacher while some of us are able to enjoy the luxury and the students are able to gain the benefits of having a full-time athletic trainer versus basically a part-time. What you're seeing is, excuse me, I'm sorry. Basically, they're having two class prep meetings, IEPs, testing, everything else that goes along with it. So what I'm suggesting is that the athletic trainers be supported and just being provided the liberty to do our jobs the best as possible. There's plenty to be done. As it stands today, I have 20 full days of hours beyond what my current 223-day contract would typically entail stacked up, just doing the job of an athletic trainer. So imagine doing that in addition to teaching. And what this is doing for our kids is it's creating better outcomes, it's creating better documentation, it's creating lower ratios for the students to work with and get the healthcare that they need. You know, the buzzword tonight has been equity, I guess. And I just want every student in Prince William County to be afforded that luxury and that necessity of having an athletic trainer that can fully do their jobs to the best of their ability. We're all very passionate people. We love our job and we love our students. And I think because it's such a small niche position in Prince William County, it's kind of fallen by the wayside. I would love to communicate with you all more. I, of course, have a lot on here that I didn't get to get to, but I appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you. Because of the high number of speakers, without objection, I'm going to ask that the school board break for 10 minutes. Any objection? Thank you. Thank you. Outstanding. We are now returning to the business of the Prince William County School Board. Thank you for allowing us that break. Next on the agenda is Dr. Waltz's superintendent's time. Dr. Waltz?
Thank you, Chairman Latif, members of the board. So let me begin, first of all, by congratulations to our newly seated school board. Congratulations to all of you. And I would like to congratulate our new members especially. Welcome the three newest members, Mrs. Jackson, Mrs. Wall, and Mrs. Zagapur. I look forward to working with each of you, along with the rest of our school board team, to ensure that we're providing a world-class education for our students. I would also like to thank Mr. Wilk for serving as the vice chair. I enjoyed working with you in that capacity. I thought you did an outstanding job. So thank you so much. And I'm glad you're continuing on the board. And I'd also like to give a warm welcome and shout-out to Ms. Lori Williams and look forward to working with you in your new role as the vice chairman of the school board. So, moving on, kudos to Tobin Traxler, Instructional Technology Coach at Leesville Elementary School, who has been named the Virginia Computer Science Educator of the Year. Again, that's for the entire state of Virginia. Mr. Traxler was chosen from over 40 teachers across the state who were nominated. Channel 7 visited Mr. Traxler earlier this month to broadcast a story on his great accomplishment. Congratulations to Katie Fielding, Instructional Technology Coach at Woodbridge High School, who was selected as the Virginia Society for Technology and Education 2019 Coach of the Year, again, for the entire state of Virginia. Ms. Fielding has special interest in using technology and educational technology to improve homebound instruction for chronically ill students. Her life with cystic fibrosis has informed her concern for this group of students. Also at Woodbridge High, congratulations to William Calley, a senior at the school. William was selected as one of Virginia's five nominees for the U.S. Presidential Scholars for Career and Technical Education. William's information has been forwarded to the National Office with the announcement of the U.S. Presidential Scholars scheduled for May. Drew Miller, who leads the TURF program at Brentsville District High School, is pictured on the front page of Golf Course Industry Magazine. So just happened to have a copy of this young man. The magazine also published an outstanding story on his award-winning program with the students out there at Brentsville. Additionally, Mr. Miller was named a pioneer in the field by Pioneer Athletics for his work to push the industry forward. Educators from Fairfax County Public Schools visited Garfield and Stonewall Jackson High Schools last week to learn more about our successes with the graduation rate for English learners. Congratulations to our English learners, teachers, and students for their accomplishments. PWCS was one of three school divisions receiving top awards in the 2019 Virginia School Board's Association Green Schools Challenge. This competition is designed to encourage implementation of specific environmental policies and practical actions that reduce carbon emissions generated by both the local school divisions and the broader community. And speaking on Going Green, PWCS will receive two electric school buses through the Dominion Energy Electric School Bus Program. The electric buses will serve as a grid resource by creating additional energy storage technology to support the company's integration of distributed renewables such as solar and wind. I would like to mention that Governor Northam has proclaimed this week as Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week. I would like publicly to recognize the hard work and dedication of our school principals and thank them for their support of our students, teachers, staff, and community. In closing, I would like to share how much I enjoyed the Martin Luther King Day 35th Annual Program and 30th Youth Oratorical Competition, Let Freedom Ring. Zion Foza, Potomac High School student who gave a moving speech about slavery, won first place in the oratorical competition. And if you'd like to visit www.pwcs.edu, we have a list of all the writing contest winners that we had in Prince William. So I enjoyed the event, try to go to that every year, and it was amazing. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we'll move on to Board Matters. We're at 20.01, the adoption of the new policy 221 Administrative Organization. First reading, Mr. Chiroki.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, members of the boards, Dr. Waltz. This is the first reading for the adoption of policy 221, named Administrative Organization. It provides a consolidation of existing policies and gives guidance on our school division's organizational chart, and it denotes its location on our PWCS website.
Any questions? Excellent, thank you. If there's any questions, please forward them to Deputy Superintendent Keith Emon this week, and he'll get them to whoever needs to get them. Thanks, Mr. Chiroki. Oh, I guess we're up for 20.02. Adoption of new policy 432, Vehicle Services. First reading, Mr. Chiroki.
Yes, again, this is a first reading of adoption policy 432, named Vehicle Services. This creates a vehicle services policy that brings into compliance with our current operational procedures for our operation of our vehicles.
Excellent, any questions?
Just a comment. I've been here a long time. I am so glad that you are maintaining these vehicles. Because when we drove in the vehicles in the past, we took our lives in our own hands. So thank you very much. That's the only comment I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jessie, have these vehicles been here as long as you've been here? It's a joke. Thank you, Ms. Jessie, for your-
Wonderful comment.
Wonderful comment. Thank you, Mr. Chiroki. Any questions or concerns, please forward them to the deputy superintendent. Next, Revision Policy 594, Legal Actions Involving Employees. First reading, Amy White.
Mr. Chairman.
This is a legally-driven revision, and I'm happy to answer any board questions in closed session on this one. Ms. White's not here tonight, but I basically assisted her with this, so.
Okay.
That's fine. Thank you, Mrs. McGowan.
Okay, this is a first reading. So any questions or concerns, please proceed them to Division Counsel, and I guess they'll be on the agenda for closed session next meeting. Thank you. Next, we'll go to 20.04. Appointment for school board member to the Joint Board for the Governor's School at Innovation Park. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board appoint three board members to serve on the Joint CIP Committee-
No, 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 we're on 20.04, I'm sorry. Governor's School at Innovation Park.
I'm sorry. Got my appointments mixed up.
Read that one, 20.04.
All right. I moved that the Prince William-
Getting a little fired up there, too early.
I moved that the Prince William County School Board, as, excuse me, I move that as provided in School Board Policy 135, the Prince William County School Board nominate one member of the school board to serve on the Joint Board for the Governor's School at Innovation Park for a two-year term.
Who would that member be? Fill in the name.
Oh, sure. Yes, it would be Dr. Barbara Latif.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ralston, Ms. Jessie's seconds? Any discussion? I'm happy to, yeah.
No objection to the appointment. I just want for the public to know that this is due to the fact that we have a current member serving on the board, and Ms. Saller-White was the last person who served on the board, and so we have to appoint a new person. I just wanted to make that clear.
And the current other members, Ms. Williams. Any discussion? Please vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Who made the second?
Ralston.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to 20.05, Appointment of Three School Board Members to the Joint CIP Committee. A motion is in order. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board appoint three board members to serve on the Joint CIP Committee for a two-year term. Those members to include Ms. Jennifer Walls, Dr. Barbara Latif-
No, no.
No, I'm sorry, excuse me, Ms. Jennifer Walls, myself, Ms. Lori Y. Williams, and Ms. Lilly G. Jessie.
Do I have a second? I second. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
20.06, School Board Referrals to the Administration. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked that this be added to the agenda. The title is sort of confusing from a general public perspective. But I wanted to make the public aware that when we receive emails that address school issues, or there's problems, or even kudos, which we do get from time to time, that school board members are to refer those to the superintendent's mailbox when it comes through in an email. And that depending on the nature of the situation, the response times will be different. I'm not sure if this point it's necessary to go into further detail at that, but that is something that school board members have taken a second look at, and I would just like to encourage our new board members to look at that procedure and protocol as well as their new board members, so that they can familiarize themselves with it. At the time that I asked for this, it was going to be the first meeting, so nothing had occurred yet, because it was like January 8th. So this is sort of a, almost a redundant topic in the sense that we've had new school board member orientation. Our new members are aware, but I thought it was good that the public know that this is something that we look at very closely, and it's not taken lightly, at least by anyone sitting up here. And it was recently reviewed. I don't know if the superintendent has anything else to add, but I thought it would be a good time, just in case, for input.
Okay. Any further discussion? Thank you. Move to 20.07, Confirmation of the School Board Poll, January 7th of 2020. And what we're doing here is just confirming that we canceled the meeting because of the snow day. We take a poll, and any poll that we do must be then certified in public. So I'll take an action if someone can give me the motion on this. Ms. Ralston? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Wall.
I move that the Prince William County School Board confirm the poll of the school board conducted on January 7th, 2020, specifically that in light of inclement weather and related code red, closing PWCS schools on Wednesday, January 2020, the school board meeting of the same date be canceled for reasons of public safety.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Madam Vice Chair's seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. You have a vote? Diane? She voted, do you vote yes, Diane?
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Excellent. 20.08, Report to the School Board on the School Board Joint CIP Committee. This is a standing item where we get reports on the workings of the Joint CIP Committee. Ms. Williams?
I just wanted to make the public aware that we have not had a meeting since November, and that was due to the fact that the committee at that time wanted to allow for new board members, we were expecting new board members on each board, to be able to participate. I wanted to thank the school board for the nominations to the committee, and I hope to expect that our counterparts on the Board of County Supervisors will be making their nominations soon, and that we can reconvene this committee and get work done. And a wonderful, outstanding relationship continue to grow between both boards. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We will now move on to Board Matters. So today, we'll start on my right with Ms. Lisa Zagapur.
Good evening. I am honored to be here, and I am excited, actually. If you all know me, some of you know me. I'm an educator. I went to Prince William County Schools, and I'm very, very excited about this kind of work that we'll be doing. As a new school board member, I'm just hoping to get out and meet the different members of the community and all the schools that are in the Coles District. Back in December, I have a friend who is a music teacher over at Yorkshire Elementary. I went to her winter concert. Yorkshire Elementary is one of two elementary schools in Prince William County that has an elementary band. So I got to hear that concert, and it was amazing. So Ms. Rebecca Anderson is doing a great job out there. I've also had a chance to just meet and greet with different people in the community. Went to the Virginia School Board Association Conference, was it last week? Yeah, the Capitol Conference. Got to learn how to school board, so that was fun. And this weekend, I went to the Human Rights Award Ceremony on Saturday, was it Saturday? Sunday? I can't even remember my days now. And then the Martin Luther King Oratorical Program, where from the Coles District, we had two high school winners, one from Osborne Park, one from Colgan. And we also had two Marshall Elementary students who were recognized for their work. So I look forward to working with everybody and just, I'm very excited to be here. Thank you.
Ms. Jessie?
I hope not to go over time. First of all, I want to thank Melissa Payne and Media Service for the outstanding job they did in producing my board brief. I was a bit concerned because I said, "Who is Melissa? I've never worked with her before." And then I realized I've always worked with Melissa, I just didn't know her name. But she did a- But she did a fabulous job. She really got me through that entire thing, and the people, the students and teachers were elated. Also, went to the Virginia Board of, School Board Association trip with Ms. Williams and our new board members. Very informative. We had a good time. We learned a lot. I want to announce that the governor has selected, Governor Northam has named Janice Underwood as the first Diversity Chief for Virginia. I am a member of the Schools and Students Challenge in Schools Committee, and I look forward to working with her because we will be discussing equity. My family and I took the opportunity to attend the Under Armour High School All-American Games in Orlando. And why were we there? Because there were students from Woodbridge, and I think I have a slide of a student with Deion Sanders. It is a major event. This is RJ Adams. He's going to Kentucky, and these guys are the top 100 players in the United States. Our coach, and I don't, I don't have a photo of him, but Coach Wertham was also selected as one of the coaches. And I have the two students, I think there's another slide, that's a little bit bigger than me. But Anton Samper is going to Louisiana.
LSU.
LSU, LSU. And so, they gave them everything. It was wonderful. And I think I, the next picture I have is of the honor, the Martin Luther King Day Celebration, 30 years. And this is one of those things that happens to you in life. You get a chance to do something, and it works out. So, I was the founder of this program, and this young lady on the right, Tanya Porter, I hadn't seen her in 30 years. She made this program happen, because although Delta Sigma Theta thought it was a wonderful idea, they didn't think it was going to work. And she was a person that we listened in, and we said, we have speakers. And of course, there are other speakers there, and I don't want to name all of them because I don't have a great deal of time. But these are previous oratorical winners. The young man on the right is now in Theology School at Yale. So, I wanted to talk about that. I need some time, if you don't mind. Finally, to the citizens of Woodbridge High School, who have come before this board at least two months, seeking a response from the superintendent's and his staff, I have to tell you that this is out of order in a sense, but it's, I've tried to wade through this, and I've watched these people for two months. My sincere apologies, because your efforts really did seem to fall on deaf ears, and we owed you better. School board members are not supposed to get involved in personnel matters. I want you to know that I did not get involved in personnel matters, that I sent the information to members of the superintendent's staff and to him as early as August 15th, when that incident happened at Woodbridge High School. I just felt my voice was not heard either, but I consider the lack of response, and I've never said this as superintendent, but I think you missed this one, and I think, I hope you're going to fix this, because I think we made a misstep on this with these, these parents and these students. I was happy to see that you've created, I don't know what it is, but, and on my part, I would like to say this, these people in the Woodbridge District elected me to serve them. They didn't elect me to serve this board, and they didn't elect me to serve you guys over there. They elect me to serve them. And so, I would, just like they were not aware of what was going to happen tonight, it's my district, and I was not aware. So, Mr. Chairman, and to the superintendent, when you guys made this plan, I would have liked to have been involved, but I think that we are going to work things out at Woodbridge High School. I'm not asking for anybody to, I'm not saying what to do, but an investigation of some kind really needs to take place, and it needs to take place quickly. And I have some other letters that were sent to me by coaches, and I will be sending those to superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Wilk.
You're vice chair now. You get to be, oh, yeah. Wow. I'll take it back. No, just kidding. I'll be brief. The MLK Junior Speech Competition was phenomenal, as always. Great participants from all the way across, the three middle school speakers and the three high school speakers were phenomenal, so that was great to be a part of that event. Brief events, really, in the last two weeks, I did have the pleasure of attending Mary Williams Elementary School and speaking to kindergarten classes about my role as a school board. They were super bored until I showed a video of like, I'm a dad too, and here's a video of watching the Lego game I play with my son, and then they went nuts. So, I was like, you know, so, tried to incorporate something fun. And then I also had the pleasure of visiting Swans Creek Elementary, my neighborhood school, and visiting Principal Whitney and her team, the phenomenal program over there, and hope to do some visits this Friday. And tomorrow, Grand Park has Parent Camp Night, a great event that I will be attending as well, but hopefully visiting some schools on Friday. So, thank you all. Have a good night.
Ms. Diane Ralston.
Thank you. I just wanted to say just a little bit, because we're still doing well on time. The Martin Luther King, of course, was the highlight of this week for me. To see those kids, you know, they're, these are young people. They're singing their hearts out. They're, oh, the speeches, oh my goodness, I get a little tearful on some of them. So, what I would like to say that we're all familiar with Martin Luther King, and who he is, and what he did. You better take a look at some of our kids of what they're doing. Thank you.
Ms. Jennifer Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking forward to working hard for the students of Prince William County by representing the Gainesville District. I'm grateful for the opportunity, and I just want to say that I will have the best interests of students and teachers in mind whenever I make any decisions. So, that's going to be my focus, my personal mission statement. On Monday, I also attended the Martin Luther King Day Celebration. It was awesome. I loved the choir. I loved the speakers, the students, oh, they were so impressive. If I had been able to speak like that at that age, wow. So, I just think that's just, that just speaks so highly to the coaches and teachers, parents, and the instructional programs that we have in our county that students could get up and deliver speeches like that. So, awesome job to everybody. It was a privilege to be there. The weekend before, I had the opportunity to attend all-county band performances. It was great to hear such an accomplished group of students. I love these all-county music events, because pull students together from all over the county, they get to be one big Prince William County band, and it was great. And the guest conductor spoke really highly of our students and praised them for their demeanor, their cooperation, their respect, and so that was, that was really great to hear. So, thank you to the students who participated in that. You're an honor to our school division. The fourth, I guess, fourth topic I'd like to talk about briefly is the Eye Light Haymaker Steam Expo, which is taking place, will be taking place, on Saturday, the 25th. This is an event that runs from 11:00 to 3:00. It's open to the public, and if you've never been to this before, then you're missing out, because it's an event for the whole family. And the website that the kids run, I quote, I quote this from the website, "It's more than your average science fair. It is a unique opportunity to explore the various aspects of science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics." So, I encourage the public to come out for that. I think it's a great event. It's so fun to see how engaged the kids are, and they run that show. There's a student who's in charge of it, and running the whole thing. And the last thing is I look forward to meeting with principals and of the schools in my district, to introduce myself and to listen to them, listen about what they have to say, because I know, right now, I know very little, and they, they know a lot more than me. A lot of people know a lot more than me. So, I look forward to that, and I look forward to serving on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wall. Ms. Adele Jackson.
It has been a great first few weeks. I want to use my time today to express my gratitude to the Brentsville community. I'm excited to be a public servant. Since January 1st, I was excited to attend Advisory Council and listen to the marvelous voices and the Pyramid High School concert in the wintertime. I was also fortunate to attend the Virginia School Board Conference with my peers, and participate in conversations with our legislators. And I also was very fortunate to attend the MLK honoring and competition. The voices of those students echoed in my hearts for the rest of the day, and it was just, it was beautiful. I've enjoyed meeting and talking with constituents, and look forward to attending more school events and meeting the administration. And also, it's Principals Week, right? So, congratulations to principals. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you to the rest of the board for helping with this transition, and thank you for Mr. Trenton meeting with me yesterday to help with this transition. Also, thank you to the technology staff who hooked me up with this wonderful application device, so that I can hear everybody better. And congratulations to the Pennington School for the We the People program, and por favor, escriba me con las preguntas. Me estoy muy bien, y quiero acordar a todas las personas en el school system. So, please email me. I'd like to accommodate all people. Thank you.
Fantastic. I, so, I think, Ms. Lori Williams.
Geez, you forgot me that quick, huh?
Seat change.
I'm sorry, my heart just exploded because someone speaks another language up here, and I don't, and I just think that's wonderful. Thank you. That was awesome. I just want to say congratulations to all of our new board members. We've had an opportunity to meet for our new school board orientation, and I had the pleasure of joining a few of you at the Capitol Conference. And for those members of the public who doesn't know, VSBA hosts a Capitol Conference for school board, school boards, where we have the opportunity to undergo training, hear about the current political climate in the state of Virginia, meet with our legislators, and talk about us, our legislative priorities, and it was an amazing event, and it was definitely a completely different climate down in Richmond. Every year is always an interesting adventure. So, a lot of other organizations ask us independently as school board members to go and lobby with them. I just want to make sure the public's aware that at least we go as a board once a year. If we don't make it with everyone else, we do go, and we had, we did have the opportunity to meet with most of our legislators, so that was a fantastic event. I want to say thank you to all the principals, specifically in my district, for all of the hard work that you do. You run many cities, and that is just an amazing feat within itself. I'm going to try to fit it all in. I want to say specifically that the specialty program deadline is February 1st. We won't meet before then, so if you have a student, please look at the specialty programs. It's for middle and high school. It is not something that, like, you have to be a certain kind of student. We have programs available for every kind of student. It's worth looking. It's worth applying. If you've never applied to something, sometimes just the process of applying is a skill that to be learned. So, I encourage you as families to look at that, and also, it's time for input for the strategic plan. So, if you had not, if you have not made your voice heard, please do so. I also want to give a special shout-out to one of our media directors back there who accidentally told me, I think accidentally on purpose, that today is his birthday, so I just wanted to wish our media person, Mr. Joe Long, who hides behind that mirror but makes us all look good up here, happy birthday, and thank you for accidentally on purpose in mentioning that, because I told you I was going to get you. And then, while I'm on a roll, I want to let you know that there is a community basketball organization called Woodbridge Wolves, and they will be having a basketball game at Freedom High School on the 26th, and I mention this because all Prince William County school personnel with an ID can get in free, and all kids under 10 can get in free, so I just think that that's fantastic. I also want to congratulate Yuki Odo from the Dove, who runs a Facebook site for autism. She won on Saturday a human rights award for all the work that she does in the community, and she gave a speech, and she is someone who speaks English as a second language, and I just want to commend her for getting up there and speaking, and for all the work she does on behalf of special education students. I know I'm out of time. I'm sorry, I have one more thing. Two more. I also want to make an announcement and request, if our staff could get with the County Board of Supervisor staff, I have mentioned in passing, but I think it would be a very good idea, whereas we are new boards, that we have a small retreat where we have the opportunity to understand and discuss each other's roles, especially with respect to our upcoming budget season. I am more than happy to put in all the work to put an agenda, but if our staff could coordinate with their staff on scheduling, because I'm not that talented, and we could set that up sometime in the near future, that would be wonderful, because we all made promises as elected officials that schools were our priority, and what better time than now to get the ball rolling on our relationships and understanding what each other does. So, I hope that this Board of County Supervisors will join the school board, and all of our school board members will be able to participate in this. And then, lastly, but very importantly, to our student representative down there, Mr. Kim, you are not aware that I know that you were featured on www.princewilliam.tv. So, I just want to congratulate you on your appearance on the inaugural episode of The Mix. I encourage everyone, they didn't know I was going to say this, I don't get anything from, anything from it, but Mr. Kim, a former student from Potomac High School and a current student at Freedom High School, spoke about student issues and specific to student athletes, but I just wanted to say thank you, because my heart melted. It is so important to me, student advocacy and hearing a student's voice, and you didn't know I was watching, but you made me cry, because you and another student from Potomac specifically mentioned me, and I just wanted to say thank you very much. You guys are heard, and I'm so proud of all of the work that you do, and all the work all of our student representatives do, and are now formed Student Senate, and I wanted to thank the superintendent's staff for starting that, because the word is getting out, and it's so important that the people that we, the 91,000 students that we govern and put rules in place for are heard, and I just wanted to say personally and publicly, thank you for that recognition and for all the work that you do. And of course, I'm wearing my pin, because it is my sorority's 100th year anniversary centennial, so I'd be very remiss if I didn't say to all of my sorority sisters, happy centennial, and thank you, I didn't mean to be so long-winded, but, and thank you for my nomination for vice chair. I am always long to win it. Thank you.
All right. Well, outstanding. This is our first meeting of the new board. I want to thank the new board members, congratulate each of them. I am over the moon with the expertise and enthusiasm that the new board members are bringing to the board and to our county schools and to our students. I'm thrilled. We had a retreat in December that was outstanding, stimulating, and we've had some great conversations since then. I would like to congratulate Justin Wilk of the Potomac District for serving very well as the vice chair for this year, and I think he served his district well. Thank you, Dr., Mr. Wilk. Yes, please give him a round of applause. I want to congratulate Madam Vice Chair, Lori Williams of the Woodbridge District. I am thrilled to work with you as well over this year, and I think our board will benefit from your expertise and leadership. I enjoyed the MLK Oratorical, I think well-stated by Mrs. Jessie and Mrs. Wall on the experience. That was outstanding. Thrilled with the work Mr. Girvin is doing with our student senators and with Ben Kim. Ben Kim, thank you for an outstanding presentation this evening. I really look forward to the, the student part of our meeting is actually my favorite part. So, thank you. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Anne Bonitabas, the Principal of Thomas Jefferson High School, which is one of our governor's schools that we share with a number of other counties. She was voted or awarded Principal of the Year in Region 2 in Fairfax. Very competitive, and she's going to be competing for Principal of the Year for the entire county in Fairfax. She is outstanding. She is, you know, many, one of the lines that many of you hear me say, whether it's professional development conferences or where I go, is that I care deeply about the students' GPA, their grades, but I care more about their GPS. Where do they want to go? How do they want to get there? What would they like to see on the way? That's the job of the public school system. She inspired those words and speaks, you know, very strongly to them, and she has run that school in that way, and has implemented change in a way that I've never seen, and change management's outstanding. So, congratulations to Dr. Bonitabas, who's also one of our principals. So, fantastic. I'd like to, everyone knows we're coming up to our budget sessions. Budget's very important. Be working on them. I get a lot of constituent requests for information. I have a lot of questions. The budget time is the time for questions. You can ask the questions all through the year, and there are a number of things that the school board has voted on, one including, you know, restoring economically disadvantaged funding, increasing that economically disadvantaged funding to help with equity. We are going to be looking at that. We're looking at pre-K funding for pre-K programs, along with what the governor does for us. We're looking at increasing teacher salaries, and we're looking at continuing to improve our schools and the environment. our schools and the environment and continually improving our culture and advising. So I will be asking my questions and working my concerns through the constituents who've reached out to me on these issues. They are very important. They are a high priority, and I'm looking forward to, and the board, you know, understands the priorities that each of us have. We've discussed them in our retreats and stuff like that, so we'll continue to work through this. And so please come to our work sessions. Please email us on your budget concerns. And lastly, you know, as this being the first meeting and having the new board members here, I want, and I've said this over and over again, this is nothing new, nothing new because of a situation, but every single board member up here that I worked with on the last board and this board, I can promise you, takes everything that is said at that podium or that they get emailed from the public and from their constituents extremely seriously. We will do and address all of those concerns, and we do do them. Sometimes it's not seen. Sometimes it takes time. Sometimes the conclusion of what can come up may not be satisfactory, but I can promise you that every single board member here leaves this meeting, has taken notes, and does care about what the constituents say. And so I want the public to really understand that. We care deeply about what you say and what you want, and we are happy to work with you. So thank you very much. Thank you for a great first meeting, and meeting adjourned.